Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Village Bartlett Committee of the Hall for September 16th, 2025. I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Baderman?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte absent. Swansky?
Here.
President Gunstein?
Here. That'll take us to our town hall portion. If anybody would like to address the board, please do so by stepping up to the podium, and please try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. This would be in regards to the items on our standing committee reports. Is there anybody that'd like to address the board? All right. That'll take us to our standing committee reports. Building and zoning committee chairman, Hopkins.
Thank you, President Gunstein. There's two items on our agenda. The first is the Bartlett Mart. The petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow packaged liquor sales at 331 South Main Street, Unit A. The Bartlett Mart convenience store opened earlier this year and is now requesting to sell beer, wine, and liquor. We are going to discuss this to see if we are going to forward this to the Planning and Zoning Commission to conduct a public hearing. Is there any questions from the committee?
I have a quick question for the petitioner. If, in fact, the special use permit is granted, do you have any desires or do you have any ambition to put gaming machines in there?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Stone, would they be allowed to put gaming machines in there?
No. So you have to have a poor license?
I just want to clarify that. Any other questions? All right. So we will send this to the Planning and Zoning Commission to conduct a public hearing. The next item on our agenda is the Copper Leaf subdivision. The petitioner, MI Homes, is requesting a concept plan review for a single-family development on 15 acres located at the east side of Naperville Road between Amber Grove and Timberline subdivision. The development would consist of 63 two-story homes. The typical lot size proposed is 44 feet wide and 120 feet deep. Each of the four models is approximately 30 feet wide. The proposed concept plan also identifies 17 right-of-way dedications, including 10 feet wide multi-use paths along Naperville Road. Detention would be provided at the southeast corner of the development. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Stone for further information.
So the right-of-way dedication that you were covering has been consistent with what we have further north in the Timberline subdivision, as well as what is, used to be World Overcomers Church. This will have two access points, one on Naperville Road, a secondary access point would be off of Tamarack. That was planned as part of the Timberline subdivision. The typical lot detail, this is a smaller lot than we've typically allowed in the Village of Bartlett. The homes are ranging in size from 2,300 square feet to almost 3,000 square feet. The petitioner is proposing four different models. Each of the models has three different building elevations, and the floor plans all have different options. You can add an additional bedroom. You can do like a luxury bath. There are more options with this than some of the other recent developments that we've had. The petitioner is present, in case there are any questions, but I do want to go over some of the different setbacks, modifications that they would be requesting. So the minimum lot width that they're proposing is 44 feet. The closest that we have in our current zoning ordinance would be SR4, which is a 60-foot wide lot. They are increasing the side yard setback to seven feet as opposed to five feet. The rear yard setback is proposed to be 20 feet. There is, we have yet to figure out what their maximum impervious surface coverage would be for these lots. As part of any sort of annexation agreement, we would probably negotiate that the applicant provide additional stormwater detention than what our minimum standards are due to this impervious coverage requirement. I am going to stop the share of this. The applicant is present and wanted to introduce themselves, so if I can find...
Yes, sir. Sorry. My name's Anna Sutton. I'm the land entitlement manager at MI Homes. I also have Greg Collins here. He is our acquisition director. Is the site plan going to be coming up? Okay, here we go. Perfect. So, thank you, Chrissy, for giving a brief overview on our Copper Leaf project. You did a great job. So I hope this continues with a great partnership moving forward. So I just wanted to come up here to introduce MI Homes, especially if you've never heard of us before.
Is it not working? Okay. You can just tell me next.
Next? So, on the screen, you'll see our land team. And about MI Homes, we are one of the nation's top home builders. We currently build in 10 states. We are continuing our success in the Chicagoland market. We've been in the area about 15 to 20 years, and we are growing. We're constantly looking for the next place to be, and that's landed us here. Next? So you can see on the screen here, there's different stars. Those are all the developments that we have done, whether they underdevelopment or have been already closed out. And so what makes us different than other... Oh, yeah, you can just stay on this slide, Chrissy. So what makes us different from other home builders, or other even builders in the area? One of those things being our architecture. Chrissy went over this. We take great pride in our architecture, that being, if you would go down, let's say, a typical home builder site, you may see very similar doors, all similar garage doors, similar light features, and so forth. All of our elevations, we try to make a lot of those things different. And let's say even two years from now, we're constantly evolving and growing and changing these items to keep up with current trends. Another thing is landscaping. We try to go above and beyond code requirements, whether that be quantity of trees, caliber inches of trees, or even the height of trees. So when you enter an MI Homes community, you know the difference. You can see the quality. And of course, we always hire the best professionals in the business, with our engineer Pearson and Brown, our landscape architect Gary R. Weber Associates, and so forth. So we are here today for any feedback that you have or any questions that you may have about Copper Leaf.
Thank you. Can you share, how did you determine that you, did you contact our village or did our village contact you?
We contacted the village. We did a submittal.
Can I ask what made you determine to contact Bartlett?
In terms of why we picked the land? Sure. I'll bring up our acquisition director, actually, because he's the one.
Hello. Good evening. Greg Collins with MI Homes. So the question is, why did we find this particular area, this particular property attractive? Why do we think that MI Homes would be a good fit?
Yes.
I mean, quite simply put, you've got a very established suburb. I think in the context of Chicagoland, and just to take a step back about MI or our portfolio of communities, we're about 50% townhomes and 50% single-family. So 50% townhome would lend itself to more infill locations, I use air quotes for infill. I mean, that's kind of industry nomenclature for certain subdivisions or communities that are in locations that have a lack of land supply, have established infrastructure, a community base, a school infrastructure base, all of those things that you find in a mature community that Bartlett has. So some of those amenities that from a macro level for where folks want to be, great locations to arterial roadway systems, I mean, those things are here. So we find ourselves looking at those locations. 15 acres is not a big piece of land for us, but for us, in this particular division and in the Chicagoland area, it's a great fit because we can, we can build a community that's sort of like a small enclave. I mean, we do, we're right now under contract for 150 acres in New Lenox and 500 units. So we can spray to all fields in terms of our capabilities, but in terms of the context of what this particular location gives to us, I think what I just said, it lends itself to an established community that has all those amenities that a particular buyer is looking for.
Thank you. So it looks like you're targeting maybe singles and like families. It looks like the lots, there's not a lot of really land with it?
Yeah.
Like a park close by, or I think I read something in there that there's a bike path? Like what are some of those amenities for the people?
Oh, is it? Oh, is it just the lane?
I think, yeah.
Okay. So we, sorry. So we have been working with the village and working with how to incorporate into the existing framework of the community, and one of those being a bike bath connection here. And of course, we'll have sidewalks throughout that will connect here.
But no community park?
No.
Can you, do you have an idea what the projected pricing is?
Yeah. So it's always subjective on the option that our customer would pick, but we're expecting the mid-fives to high sixes.
So just as we think, because we're looking at that underpass with the, under the railroad track, or following the railroad tracks under 59, so if someone was in here, they have to go to the front of the subdivision, right up Naperville and around, there's going to be like nothing where they can get through? You would be able to, so there will be a bike path along the east side of Naperville Road. This fills in one of the existing gaps. They would be able to cross the railroad tracks when the grasslands, when we finally get Metro, to put in that pedestrian crossing. Then they would be able to take a bike path through the grasslands for that underpass. Okay. So that would all be off-road. Okay. And then this, the sidewalk connections for Tamarack, as you go to the northeast corner of Timberline subdivision, it does connect to the Peregrine Park in Eagles Ridge subdivision. Okay. So it's up to the park district. They make the decision whether they want a land donation or cash donation. Okay.
Let me ask, I see, you know, they all have garages and whatnot. I'm just curious that, for example, if you were to have a birthday party, graduation party, whatever the case may be, are we going to allow on-street parking and all?
I don't know if, I don't know if there would be room for on-street parking.
I know that's...
Without blocking a driveway.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. So basically, we could get, maybe get four cars, two in the garage and two in the driveway. And it's always a concern that I have about the parking, and it's only for special occasions. So I don't know, some, something can be...
So, sorry to jump in there. So our right-of-way would allow for street parking like you would at a typical neighborhood. We wouldn't designate that with parking signs, of course, but in the event that there was a party of some sort, there would be room available for street parking.
Thank you.
How many developments do you have with density like this?
So our density is, I think, about 4.2, and we do have probably about a small handful with a very similar density. Let me try. I have a matrix here.
Ms. Stone, is there anywhere in the village that has density and setbacks similar to this?
The setbacks are unique, in this case, for single-family. We do have other, like townhome communities that have a higher density.
Yeah, I think, I think, given you some context on our approach, much like the question of why choose Bartlett, you know, we looked at this property for a couple land uses, an infill location like this, and there's a zoning exhibit, right?
There is. I'm trying to get to it.
If you can get to the zoning exhibit, I think that tells a big picture here of what, given some site context, given, given what our approach is was for the site.
Chrissy, are you able to click next?
Was it before this, or?
I think it's...
At the end? This is the last slide.
Oh, sorry. You didn't go before. Keep going. Here we go. Okay. Back what? Right there. Oh, sorry. Go to the zoning. One. There you go.
There we go. So when you see north, south, and east, you're dealing with SR5 PDS and a combination of densities. When you've got to the north and to the east, you've got attached into the south, you've got what I would call a little bit higher density, it's typical than traditional single-family. So we looked at this as that kind of hole in the doughnut and say, okay, you could propose townhome here and have a logical argument from a land use standpoint. Look, we've got two connective, two connection points, right? Because what was built, what was granted, and what you see out there today, you connect north to Timberline to a townhome community, and direct west to Naperville Road. So we looked at as, look, there's a, there's a high-level concerted effort to say, what can we do to achieve a little bit more attainable? We sell the resale market for townhomes. We didn't want to necessarily play in that sandbox, per se, with new construction at a super premium to what you see on a resale market for townhomes. We saw that, I think, what I would call almost a hybrid approach, to say, look, something that's a little bit more akin to a low-maintenance environment, which is what we're finding with a lot of millennial buyers that are entry-level or first time, and can see this as something that, I don't have to necessarily maintain a large lot, per se, in traditional single-family neighborhoods, but I get a square footage and something that's a little bit more breathable rather than being attached in a townhome environment. We actually have another series of homes that are smaller than this, same design, but they're a smaller bandwidth of square footage to, again, almost become that detached townhome. Again, different approach. We felt that, given the submarket here, you've got a strong single-family presence, but we can deliver that single-family square footage and not necessarily a large lot, per se, and then, and fit well within the context of being surrounded by attachment.
I have a couple of questions. Are you going to have HOA on this?
Correct.
All right, there will be. And I want to make sure, I just wanted to verify the question that trustee Swansky asked. The average price for a home, if I understood correctly, was 500,000 to 600,000?
You're going to be, most of them are probably transacting the high 500s to maybe low 500s. I mean, you get one or two flyers out there that with finishes and lot premiums might, you know, jump in and it's...
I thought I misunderstood, so, okay. Thank you.
So I have a few, I have a few questions or notes. First off, I like the design. We've seen another developer come through here with a different design on this a few years ago, and I think that this definitely is a better use for the property. My concern is a couple of things. The corner lots where the curved streets are, how are the houses going to be orientated on there? And then, are there going to be special setbacks for the fences that would be allowed on those lots so that the fences are not up against the sidewalks? That's one of them. And then, being that it's an HOA, is there going to be a requirement to have a certain type of fence so that neighboring properties don't have different levels of fences, that the corners aren't fenced with a six-foot-high PVC fence out at the street? So those are my questions on the corner lots, the curved ones particularly, on the inner ring, because it seems pretty dense there, where those lots might pose an issue for both a driveway and for kids walking, or people riding their bike on those sidewalks?
So we could put a restriction in as part of the annexation agreement for this if we want to have those fence cut back so we could be mindful of the vision clearance?
I think that would be a good point. I think it's very, it looks bad from a development standpoint when you go in and there's like nine different types of fences, but more importantly, the fence is up against the street.
Sure.
Per se.
And I can, we can give you a list of the communities that we build. We're one step ahead of you. Our standard for any single-family community is a, we do between four and five feet. Typically, it's five feet, and it's a decorative black aluminum period. It's one design. It doesn't have finials or anything on top.
It's not a privacy fence. It's a black...
Are you talking about fencing for the lots themselves, individual homeowners?
Homeowners.
That's what I'm saying. It's not a community fence. So it's a decorative, you know, five-foot aluminum, black, you know, with probably four-inch spacings between, and we can do puppy pickets, which is if someone has a dog, you can eliminate that spacing below if they're small enough, or they, you know, you get spindles in between. So we already do that, and that's how we regulate all of our single-family communities.
And also to answer your question about the fence going to the street, it wouldn't. We typically would stop at wherever the house ends, that's where the fence would end.
Okay. And that would be something that you would address in the planning commission?
Right.
I mean, I know the park district will review this for their request for land or for donation. My only concern was that the driveways will have enough room to park a car without being in the curve of those inner lots. That's all.
Take a look at that. It's mentioned on here that the street is 28 feet from curb to curb?
Just, yeah, back, back curb to back curb, yeah.
Back to, back curb. What's the standard in our village, Mr. Dinjas?
I believe that's typical. That's a standard, 28? Does this have community mailboxes, or will there be mailboxes in front of each home?
In today's world, it's community mailboxes, unless we can work with the post office on something different, but the standard is good now.
And the last thing, is the sidewalk up against the curb and gutter, or is it set back with a green space parkway?
Set back with a, there is a parkway.
So there is enough...
What is the parkway?
The parkway appears to be about three to four feet.
So there's enough room to park two cars on the driveway, back from bumper to front end, without...
We'd have to see the...
Without hanging into the street, is my...
It depends on how the placement of the homes, if they build up to that 20-foot setback, front setback, or if they have them set back a little bit.
That'll, that'll all come out in time.
Do we have an ordinance blocking the sidewalks?
Yeah, that's, that was the concern, that you'd have two cars blocking the sidewalk. Was the sidewalk at the street, or was it up in front of the parkway? So, okay.
Is this the same property that was brought before us several years back for an apartment?
Yes. So this was before us previously as a concept for 146 apartments. We've also seen a concept plan submittal that never got past the staff level for 88 townhome units.
All right. Any other questions? My only question is, I mean, it's not really an issue for you, but a lot of the residents over there do have concerns with traffic on Naperville Road. This does add traffic to Naperville Road. I know the residents over there are concerned with truck traffic, not necessarily residential traffic, but that's something that hopefully will work itself out. But, so the direction is for you to work with them to come up with a final plan to present us, then?
So if the board feels positive about this submittal, then they would come in for a full development application, which would include an annexation agreement, because this is unincorporated.
And they have to go through the planning and zoning commission, public hearing. What's your timeframe?
Your timeframe? I mean, realistically, we assume there's always a handful of months required for final development plans, and so, and we deal with construction. So right now, we would love to, by summertime, we're talking about commencement.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right. We'll let staff work with you guys and come up with a final plan.
All right.
All right. Thank you for being here. That's all we have under building and zoning tonight.
Travis Hopkins, Community Economic Development. And thank you, guys, for being here. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President. We have three, we have three items. First is Moore Brewing BETA application. Moore Brewing has requested a $50,000 BETA grant to support a $250,000 rooftop patio enhancement at the Bartlett location. They proposed installing a louvered roofing system with motorized retractable siding, weather sensors, LED lighting, and electrical integration to make its rooftop patio weather-resistant and usable year-round, addressing a 30% to 40% seating capacity loss during inclement weather. The upgrade is expected to increase revenue by 10% to 12% through expanded event programming, private parties, beer releases, corporate gatherings, and support year-round staffing, preventing seasonal layoffs, and potentially creating new jobs. The total project is approximately $250,000 after design fees and contingencies, with Moore Brewing funding 80% privately. The $50,000 BETA grant, 20% of the cost, will be reimbursed upon project completion and submission of proof of payments. The project meets BETA criteria by generating sales tax, leveraging private investment, enhancing aesthetics and functionality, supporting job retention creation, and diversifying the local economy as Bartlett's only brew pub with a rooftop beer garden. On July 14th, 2025, the Economic Development Commission unanimously recommended approving the $50,000 BETA grant contingent on project completion to code and verified payments. Any questions?
None.
The petitioner is here tonight. If anybody...
Yeah, they're here.
Actually, I have a quick question, because I felt like the picture, I couldn't really tell. So is it like sides too, or just the town?
First of all, thank you for that beautiful summation of the presentation that I shared with you all.
Pretty good, Rita.
So, yeah, the picture doesn't show how the sides would come down with this, but yeah, the intention is to have it where it is fully usable no matter the season. And...
Even if there is like inclement weather, it's thunderstorming, it's still...
Yeah, the neat thing about this, it is hurricane-proof. It can withstand, I mean, they have places in Banff, they have places in Florida where they've used this system. So it is weather-tight from all of those perspectives. We didn't put it in the rendering just because that wasn't the initial thought of how this was all going to pan out. And then we were talking with them, and I'm like, well, this makes sense just to cover the whole thing, and that's where some additional costs come in. But, yeah.
So it'll still feel like open air when the weather is nice around?
Exactly, yeah. So the whole idea is, picture how a roll-up garage door would go into its own soffit, if you will, and then the louvered roof system, I mean, it'll look minimal in the sky itself. So yeah, full light, full breeze, if everything is really nice, it's fully open. But then, as weather changes, whether it's too hot, too cold, whatever it might be, there's fans, there's heaters, there's lighting, it's, you know, fully utili, utilization. The utilization is 100% based on whatever's going on, so no downtime, no loss.
I know. There was one day I was there, and you were closing for a private party.
Yeah.
Has that been more of a question lately, of having private parties?
Boy, has it been. Yeah, we get requests almost every day for private parties. And the neat thing about this is, I don't know if you guys have driven by the building during the summer months when we've had a private event. We had a couple of weddings this summer. One was a 150-person wedding where they actually held the ceremony upstairs, and it was amazing. But to be able to do something like that throughout the whole year and not just, you know, the lucky, let's call it 60 days a year where the weather's really, really great to be able to do something like that, that is where, for us, we see it's most beneficial.
Those are my questions. Okay. Well, if there's no other questions, we'll forward the Moore Brewing's $50,000 BETA grant request to the next village board meeting agenda.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Sorry, I have to scroll. I didn't have it. The next item on the list is our strategic plan discussion. And we have Cory here with us again. So the village board launched a new strategic plan following a governance workshop with CP2 Consulting. Staff was directed to work with CP2 to create a streamlined plan with clear directives. A two-night board session included a SWOT analysis, environmental scan, visioning and goal-setting exercises, surveys, and discussion on the village's future. Goals were refined with the management team, leading to CP2's draft plan. The draft outlines five goals: financial stability, future-focused development, quality of life, future-ready workforce, and preserve critical infrastructure. Consultant Cory Plash will guide discussion on adoption steps, including a measure gallery to engage stakeholders and ensure community-driven support. So I'll turn it over to Cory.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you for having me back again. So as you recall, the last thing that we talked about when we all met before was, I was going to come back, and we were going to talk through dialing this in a little bit. So I've been working with staff in order to do that. So let's jump in. So I've been working with staff in order to do that, so let's jump in. As we walked through, and I'm going to zoom through this real quick, because we just covered this. These are our strategic goals. You'll notice that it's a little bit different, because again, we dialed that in a little bit. As we go, I'm just going to refresh everybody on some definitions. An outcome is essentially, what does success look like? And our target, if you recall, is what is that measurable outcome that we're looking for? Again, we want to see some sort of change by some sort of a date, and we always measure progress towards a goal, never people. So with that, I know that you all received this in advance, but what I want to do is, if you have any questions, I want to give you the opportunity to go ahead and ask that as we go. So I'll go ahead and stop at each of the financial goals. If there's no questions, I'm going to keep right on going. So financial sustainability pretty much stayed the same. There were a couple of tweaks, primarily to the first one, the calibrating, the general corporate property tax levy to capture new growth, just kind of elaborated that idea. Are there any questions that we have on this financial sustainability goal? I'm going to keep right on going. Future-focused development. This is actually one, I do want to?
Wait, can we just go back? I did have a question on the water and sewer study. When did that start?
It started, the water and sewer study started in, I believe it was approved in May timeframe. We've been working on that, and they're due to do a committee meeting, probably the first meeting in November, and then hopefully finalize in December.
Finalize, I mean, I guess my question is, why is this taking until December of 2026 to complete?
Oh.
Says 2026 on the?
Should be '25, yeah.
Print.
Okay, thank you.
It's the end of this year.
Okay, and regarding the grants, the grant matrix, is that supposed to be 2025 also, or are we waiting until May of 2020? Is this going to take us another six months to come up with a grant matrix?
I think that's correct, because? You know, we want to go through the capital budget process and the budget process, so that would line up with the approved budget, so that we have, you know, we want to have those projects more aligned with the matrix. So is it a road grant? Is it a water grant? Is it, you know, more specific to match up what we have in the capital, or what we have as goals for the budget?
All right, thank you. All right, future-focused development. I do specifically want to call your attention to the second outcome. We had initially talked about having downtown be a destination, but the more that we talked, the more that we really thought about the fact that I don't know that there's actually a clear vision right now. And really, that would be the first step, is to really understand exactly what the vision for downtown is, to have alignment on that so that it can be executed on. So that has been adjusted slightly. And with that, the targets then align with understanding what that vision is and having alignment on that vision. Other than that, are there other, is there any other questions on this particular goal?
So we're going to facilitate public engagement and visioning by December, and we're anticipating that's going to take eight months to get a vision to send an RFP out.
You're looking at the first outcome, the first one? Not the second one? I just want to make sure we're looking at the same one, the developer in place?
Yeah, can planning consultant facilities by 12 of '25 with public engagement. And then number two, the RFP to developers by August of 2026.
I would say the reason for that delay is we're hoping to be farther along with the Phase 1 for the Oak realignment, so we know if we can include all of the iDOT property and determine how much is excess, so that when we're sending an RFP to developers, we know if it's only a 19-acre site, or if it's really going to be closer to 45.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this goal? I'm going to keep going then. Quality of life. Again, this is very similar to what you saw. I want to call your attention to the third one. We have just tweaked the words a little bit, but this really has to do with public safety and making sure that we've got evidence-based safety engagement. And so this is going to be primarily done by the police department. That was that goal that we had really talked about with public safety.
Is that something, I think Chief Conway, you mentioned like with GIS too, like that was another data analytic point, that we can use GIS. Would that go along with what that goal is?
Yeah, absolutely. That position would be a great assistance with fulfilling that.
Okay, thanks.
Can you define under-engaged populations for the purpose of this document, of what we're doing?
Yeah, so a lot of times, communities have got populations that simply don't engage as much. What we know is that, you know, and it kind of varies community by community, but sometimes it is people who are younger, sometimes it is renters, sometimes English is a second language. Again, it all kind of depends on the specific community, but making sure that you're first identifying which populations are simply not as engaged, and then making specific outreach.
And the village website to be launched, is this improving the current website or replacing the website?
It's a, oh, go ahead, Scott.
It's replacing the current website.
Thank you. Future-ready workforce, this is one where we went ahead and wordsmithed a goal a little bit, but it seemed to be more in line with the intentions of what came out of the retreat. But the actual outcomes themselves, again, are very similar to what we discussed, but with some more targets that are more dialed in. There are, and you'll notice, it's not uncommon with a strategic plan to have some dates that are open. A lot of times, what that means is, we don't have the date to establish a baseline. We need that first in order to be able to go through and figure out how it is that we want to make some adjustments. Are there any questions on this one? I'm going to keep going then to critical infrastructure preserved. As you recall, we left with just it being infrastructure, but this really did capture better what the goal was of the discussions that we had to really make sure that this is preserved for the future. And again, these are pretty, this is reflective of our conversations, other than the fact that you guys decided you wanted extra credit on this one, and rather than simply having three outcomes, you have four. Have any questions on this one?
I have a question for Mr. Dinges. The asset management software, what are we, how much are we looking at for this software? Like, what, can you give us some information on it?
Streets was, is currently being implemented. I don't remember the dollar value.
Like, what are we spending on software for asset management in public works currently, right now?
Currently, so right now, we're with the streets. It'll be $90,000, $50,000 is implementation, $40,000 will be the annual, and then adding water, and then sewer over the next two years. The total cost is, I think it was, like Tyler said, it kind of, you get economies of scales. I don't know what the, do you remember what the final is with everything? About $100,000 annual, once you have everything implemented.
Streets, water, and sewer?
Streets, water, and sewer, yeah.
Are most of the surrounding communities using this software?
Yes, and more and more continue to implement.
I have a question on the lead service. Is that fully in our control, or people who own properties, can they push back?
We're going into people's houses, because we're replacing to the meter. So we have had, I think, one to date that refused. And the EPA says, as long as you offer it, they sign a waiver saying they are refusing, then we're covered. So hopefully, we try to minimize that, because we're basically telling the homeowner, this is your last shot. The village is willing to pay the full bill. If you don't do it now, you're on your own later. So most people will get it done. We did have one refuse, and as long as we get the waiver, basically, that says I refused to have it changed, then EPA is okay with that.
Dan, that's after the shut-off valve right at the street? So there's no?
Right, it goes from our main all the way into the home at the meter.
For the person that refused?
Person that refused, yeah. We then do it to the B-box. And then, so in the future, the B-box to the home would be the homeowner's?
Do they say why they refused?
I believe in this situation, they had, in their basement, it would have required some maneuvering of, I forget what they had there, but they had something where they didn't want to have to deal with moving things around, so they refused. But we made them understand that this is their one shot to get it, so.
Would that be something that if they were to sell the house, that it would be like a notice to the new owner?
Yeah, I think at this point, they will have to notify that it has a lead service. So that's something that they're going to have to deal with, but?
Okay.
Hopefully, like I said, usually, once we tell them that the village is paying the bill, and that is, while we're here, this is your opportunity to get it replaced and not have to worry about lead. Everybody else has joined on. It's just this one particular case.
And so what's the target to eliminate lead services? So it's by 2028 here?
Right. That's, we're at, right now, we have about 75, so that's looking at like 25 per year over the next three years.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Will that one house count in the percentage forever?
I guess it will. It'll be a lead service that? I don't know that the EPA has figured out how they will handle homeowners that refuse. Because, I mean, it's to their home, so we can't force it.
All right. This is why, remember, I said I was the expert on strategic planning, and you guys are the experts on Bartlett? This is exactly what I was talking about with that. So let's talk through the next steps. I'm missing an important bullet here, and that bullet is measure gallery. What is a measure gallery? A measure gallery is an opportunity for both the staff and the community to actually take a look at this before it's been finalized. And we ask the question, give us your input. Are we, if these are the things that we're moving towards, if this is what success looks like, are we measuring this in the right way? Is there a different way to look at this? So we're going to be asking for input on the strategic plan. My understanding is that we're looking at doing this probably on one day, staff being able to give input during the day, and then having something open to the public at night. So I've done this in multiple locations. Generally, it is just, again, kind of an open house, where people are able to give input on it before this is finalized. We can then go ahead, take that input. We can get some really constructive ideas, maybe tweaking something a little bit here or there before we move to finalization. After that, then, we would go ahead, we would actually finalize those targets, those outcomes, and then move towards initiatives. What are initiatives? They're simply the plans, the programs, the strategies, on how we're going to accomplish the things that we have in this plan. We would then, at that point, be ready for the final report. So CP2 Consulting will go ahead and prepare that final report. I've got a graphic designer, so that will be something that will be suitable for release to the public. And then we'll work on project plans, because if we know what's going to get done, who's going to do it, and when it's going to be, it's going to happen, that's when things get done. Are there any questions for me?
Is there any digital way to do this measure gallery, instead of like having an open house set up here for physical viewing of something?
So one of the?
Especially considering the under-engaged populations?
Yeah, so one of the challenges with a measure gallery is that sometimes you need a little bit of context, so it's helpful to have someone explain. Is it possible? Absolutely. But it's, again, having that context is a little bit more difficult. We can certainly, I can certainly go through and give some suggestions. I worked once with a community, and they did do it digitally, but it was for an internal audience, not an external audience. Unless you have familiarity with strategic planning, it can be hard to kind of understand, you know, kind of what it is that we're trying to do and what it is, you know, how it all kind of fits together, would be my only caveat to that. But that's why generally doing it in person is a little bit better. That way, we would have people there to be able to answer questions.
I'm just concerned about the timing of that. You're probably going to speak to about 10 people, right, instead of 41,000? So really not getting the measurement that we're looking for. We're probably going to get the 10 outspoken folks that like to come into Town Hall. So something digital, I think, would help get better metrics or?
Yeah, we can certainly look at doing something digitally as well. But also, it's an opportunity to really engage staff, so this is going to be implemented by staff. And so having that available for staff as well is an important component of that. But yeah, we can certainly look at ways to be able to do that in an online fashion.
I love the staff idea. I mean, that's good for something physically here. But when you engage the community, I don't think Town Hall works as well. I think it's important to note that our communication with our residents has been improved since the last time we've had a community outreach, a viewing, or whatever you want to call it. So I think it's important to make sure that these type of community engagement campaigns are fully out there, in our Bartlett, newspaper, stuff like that, so it is not a flop, and there's not just 10 people showing up. And maybe it's here for a period of time, and they can fill something out, as well as put it on our website and have maybe community input through that forum as well. So I'm not sure what the plan is and how we are going to do it, but I want to make sure that it does get out to the vast majority of our, all of our residents. At least them have an opportunity to put their input in. Not everybody travels to Village Hall to see it, to your point.
Right. Excellent.
I've been in other ones, or invited to other strategic plans, and I know it was like on an email list, and I know they like broke it down by groups. Like, I've gotten it several times, just based on the different groups I'm in.
Sure.
So that was like, it was like a good, I thought more like an invitation, like they wanted me there.
Yeah.
You know, versus just putting it out like in the newspapers or whatever, just putting it out there for someone. It was like direct, directly invited.
More targeted. Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Put donuts out.
I'll be there.
I always recommend food. Yes, absolutely.
More brewing beer and donuts.
Yes, we will have a nice new place to have.
There are no other questions. Thank you so much, Cory.
I do, I do want to make sure that we are all on the same page. Our foot is not off the gas pedal with any other infill properties or commercial developments outside of our strategic plan. We're currently working on developments from Army Trail to Irving Park, per se, and all the way out to West Bartlett Road in addition to this strategic plan. I know our staff is working diligently on different properties, just like MH Homes came before us. I think one of the questions Renee had is, how did MH Homes discover us? I think the, what you were asking was, is the "You Belong, We Belong" campaign, did that lure them in?
That's what I was asking.
I think that's what you were asking, I thought that's what you were asking. And I think if that was how that developer came forward, I think it's okay to keep our strategic plan focused on certain things while we're still evolving in other areas. The downtown and the development from the CVS all the way to our TIF district is very important to a lot of us. So we do need to make sure that that stays on the, the gas pedal's pressed on that as long as we can and come up with a plan. So, but yes, I knew what you were asking there, and I think that hopefully the?
It wasn't the answer I got, though.
No, but I think, I think there was some hype about us being a development-friendly community now, and it is trickling out in the development arena. I've heard it, and I think it's good. And I think when we have stuff like this, and we're putting strategic plans in place, and we are development-friendly, and we want to push things through and get developers going, I think we're going to start seeing that snowball effect where people want to be in Bartlett, and not just, you know, "You belong," but "You should be here," you know? So I'm excited about it. I'm grateful for your input throughout this whole process, so thank you very much. And I think that you? I think that you kept us on track, or from veering off into subgroup committees of conversation. So hopefully, if anybody has any other questions on it, but I'm excited about it.
You're not rid of me quite yet. I will be back again with the final report, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more item.
Shut up.
Yep. Community and Economic Affairs Committee, one of President Gunstein's initiatives was to expand and shine a spotlight on our mission to strengthen economic development and community engagement. To achieve this, the proposal is to reimagine the committee structure that combines the Bike and Run Committee with the EDC, and the new commission with new broader objectives, of which are highlighted in the staff memo. So aside from reading the memo, do I just, I'll turn it over to staff?
Yeah, this is the outline for a new committee. President Gunstein did send a letter out to all the commissioners, and I think we've gotten a few responses back of folks that are interested, so if you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Did we have people not interested?
I have not heard...
We've had a couple people say, if you need to make room on the committee, I'm happy to step back, not like, I'm not interested, but if I need to make space, I'm willing to do that.
Right. So, I served on the EDC Board for a few years, I know Trustee Gansey did as well. There were a lot of months that went by where it was just an informational download, where you sat there, and you just listened to what staff had to tell us. And, to me, it was an informational grab for a select group of people that were on that board, and if we're gonna go out of our way and put the time and energy in, and have a committee, I think it's important that the people that are giving their time have something valuable to take away from that, and that is their involvement in the committee, or their community, their involvement with special events, Bike and Run, different aspects of the village that the village staff sometimes doesn't get involved in, but they will. One of the things that we moved to the EDC, the new EDC, would be the presentation of event money, like civic funding, so that if somebody like the Fourth of July Committee wants to come before and ask for civic funding, they would come to the EDC, they would explain why they need it, how much they need it, it would be evaluated on the front side by a group of commissioners, and then it would be presented to the board. So that's one of the changes. I think the BETA grant program is being reworked, so we'll decide if we're going to keep that in there, or if it's gonna move out of there, but I think that kind of covers most of it, right Scott? I mean, if there's anything else you wanna add, or if anybody has any questions?
I just had a question for, just a point of clarification. The designated, so the 11 members, 11 in addition to the chairperson?
It's 11 with the chairperson.
With the chairperson.
Correct.
With the designated seat held by the designee from the Chamber of Commerce, correct?
There'll be a chamber member on that board.
Correct.
So nine at large.
Nine at large, okay. So, does the designated member of the Chamber of Commerce also have to reside in Bartlett? Because I notice all the other spots have to also.
I don't know if that was defined clearly. I think it was the, we originally defined it as the president of the chamber, or a assigned member.
Well, does that representate, do we, I think we need to determine whether that person needs to be a member, a resident of Bartlett also?
I think that's fair to say, that we should probably have somebody that's a member and a resident who's on the chamber.
Well, we have the Bartlett Area Chamber of Commerce now, so there's members of both, you know, Hanover Park, and they, South Elgin, I mean, they have a broader reach than just Bartlett. So, if we do wanna specify that, we should. We haven't specified it, that requirement exists with the EDC currently, and it does not specify residential, I believe.
I would say it wouldn't have to, because if that person at the chamber, like whoever it is, it's a paid position, the president, right? So it's a paid position, and they should have interest. They don't have to live in our community to have interest. It's to the betterment of the entire chamber that they're on there.
That is true. We used to have, require a business from Bartlett, and that business owner did not have to live in Bartlett, is that correct? So, I mean, it's the same concept of that, but...
I just think we just need to have it clarified, that's all.
Yeah, I think we can clarify that as something. I know there was some concern, or some questions regarding consolidating the Bike and Run Committee to the EDC Committee, and not everybody shares the same passion for Bike and Run, but I think when you look at this as an EDC as a whole, it's not just economic development, it's also community affairs, which brings the Bike and Run Committee back into the mix, when you wanna host 5Ks, or Kickstand Classics, which we've gone away with, where we can get more people involved and stuff of that nature. So, you know, if anybody has any questions on that?
Yeah, I do. I have a question on the one-year term. How many seats will be involved with the one-year term?
Again, that's initially just to structure the appointments.
One, one-year, two, two-year, three-year.
So two, two-years, sir. One-year?
Yeah, we stagger them just so that you don't have everybody rolling over all at once, until you get to the full terms.
It's just a one-year, it'll renewed.
Those initial, that's just for the initial terms. After that, they'll all go to the standard three-year terms, yeah.
So, staff will be required to come to these meetings?
Well, currently, Tony and I staff the EDC, Kristi staffs, her folks staff the Bike and Run. I mean, I can see, to be honest with you, I could see several staff members, and depending what's on the agenda, that particular meeting will determine who supports the staff table.
I mean, I'm not really in favor of this. I think it really takes away from what the Bike and Run Committee goals are, and I don't foresee a member of Public Works attending every meeting like they did with the Bike and Run. The Bike and Run only met four times a year, not every month, like this commission, so if, I just don't, I don't see this functioning in the best interest of bike paths and running paths in this community. I mean, that's just my opinion. I just don't see what Bike and Run and maintenance and signage really has to do with economic development, and if we lose, the members that sit on the Bike and Run Committee are really, truly passionate, and, I mean, I just don't know if they're passionate about economic development, and I don't know if they're willing to put in a meeting every month. Are we, do we set our time, like, what time is this meeting held?
The way we left it up to the new committee to decide what times and days their meetings would be held.
So, I mean, that's another factor that, you know, I'm always concerned with.
Well, if there's no Bike and Run items, per se, on the committee for Bike and Run on that meeting, I don't, I wouldn't anticipate Public Works being, attending that. But if there was, I would anticipate Public Works would be there for that.
I just foresee that it's gonna be a shift to more economic development, and not really focused on Bike and Run. And, I, like I said, I don't, it seems like everything that you mentioned should bolster your Economic Development Commission, it really doesn't have anything to do with Bike and Run. It has to do with changing the EDC, and what you guys are presenting, or staff is presenting to the EDC. They're two completely different things. I just, I just don't, I can't wrap my head around it, honestly.
Adam, let me ask you a couple questions. I'm not, I'm not that familiar. How many people do you have on the Bike and Run Committee? Did you say?
I think there's five, five or six.
And how many times have you met?
Four times a year.
That's it?
That's it.
Well, let me throw this out. Why could we still have this committee and maintain the Bike and Run Committee if you're only meeting four times a year?
You can ask me that, but you should ask President Gunstein. This is not my choice.
We just, we felt that, or I felt that we should consolidate the amount of meetings we're having to one. I disagree, I think Bike and Run is imperative to our community develop, our community and economic sustainability in our town. I think there's a lot to be said for being a Bike and Run community. I think there's a lot that comes from that, above and beyond just bike paths and signage, you know? Having the events that all kind of folds in there. So, and if you're meeting four times a year?
Do you think we should increase the budget for Bike and Run paths? If it's that important?
If Bike and Run budget needs to come before us, then we have to look at that. So, those are, those are questions that you guys currently have, or a budget that you currently have, and you're sitting on, so, you know, there's really not a budget for that, correct?
I think we...
That committee doesn't have budget authority.
Well, no, not the committee, but...
Right. There's no like Bike and Run budget.
I understand that.
I'm just explaining.
Yeah.
Again, this is for discussion, so I'll ask Chris, go ahead.
I feel like it gives like a holistic approach, so it's not just development, so affairs is talking about all of the events, lifestyle things that make Bartlett, so what's pulling people in, whether it's residents, people looking at us, people visiting, and then helping bolster development, because now it's, it's getting more, you know, of events and things out there that showcase Bartlett. But I would say, like, I haven't been to a Bike and Run Committee meeting in a while. They did have some great goals, I think it's something that could be easily put in here. I guess one of the other questions is, what have we heard from Bike and Run when they received this letter? Did they, did they offer any?
Feedback?
Yeah, 'cause maybe they're all excited, maybe for them, they'd be like, "Good, there's something else that I can help with," and I see how having paths fits in with having an event that bring people to eat at restaurants in Bartlett. So I guess I would more err on the side of hearing if there was any communication from them, on what they thought about it, but I would think it would get, it gives like a better holistic approach altogether, instead of disjointed, 'cause I feel like I try to come to separate meetings to hear what's going on, and piece it all together, and this would allow it to be under one umbrella. But I'm open to hear if there's...
I'm hearing both sides of this. I also, before Trustee Gansey mentioned it, was going to ask if, if the other members of the Bike and Run Committee have even been approached to see how, what their reaction was. Did they, were they like, "Oh heck no, we want our own committee, and we wanted to only focus on this," or were they open to that?
The Bike and Run Committee and the EDC Committee all received the letter last week. We have not heard from folks on the Bike and Run Committee, I think there's one in the audience, but we haven't heard directly from the membership.
Kristy, you're involved on a, on a meeting-by-meeting basis for the Bike and Run. With merging these two together, do you feel that there's any gaps in how this comes together? And how it's, how the Bike and Run and the EDC merge together? If there's not, I shouldn't say gaps, there's gonna be overlaps, but I just wanna make sure, in your opinion, things aren't gonna fall by the wayside for Bike and Run, I just wanna make sure that it's all together.
I would recommend that we have set agenda, meeting quarterly was really beneficial for Bike and Run, so there were certain items we could discuss, kind of what the recommendations were for bike path maintenance and things coming up with the capital budget. So if it was something that we knew, we could make those set agenda items, say, quarterly, that we're gonna discuss those specific items. I do think, I would say that bike paths are very popular in the village of Bartlett, that was one of the comments that we got when we've done a lot of the surveys for community input. So I do think it is like a community issue to be discussed, and I do know that Bike and Run also did wanna have some more events to kind of publicize the bike paths. I would recommend that if we are combining the two, we really emphasize the bike and run aspect of that, as we have been trying to get the bicycle-friendly community, so I wanna make sure that we still keep that, really, I don't know if we could change the name to include bike, but...
The name can be modified.
Modified, but I do think that it's, there is a lot of overlap with what Bike and Run is doing with some of the, wanting to do the events, and right now, it's kind of hard to have them be an island when it comes to that.
I think that the way it would be designed is that Bike and Run would be a standing committee report on that meeting, just like our standing committee reports are here, you know? It's something of that...
I mean, hearing that, they, they wanna do more events, I feel like that was the whole purpose of this, was to talk more about events and get it together. So if Bike and Run is, we're getting the, like, we're making decisions on the paths, which I think it's a known, we all want that, so if something comes up, a grant comes up, we're saying yes. But it sounds like if they, if events, then this would be perfect way to get it all together, as long as we have something on the agenda for it.
Right, I think we could have, like the mayor said, have a standing report that's like Bike and Run items, so that we keep that going, whether you wanna do it monthly or every other month, just so that it is designated as that is a topic that the committee covers.
Mm-hmm.
And it would be beneficial when we have funding opportunities, sometimes the fundings, the grant deadlines don't meet up perfectly with what we're doing when we meet quarterly.
So, we only received three or four feedbacks on the initial email, is that correct? From different members of the EDC? And we received none from the Bike and Run at this point? Okay. So, this'll come back for another discussion? Is that, I mean, is that, are we sending this to the board, or are we going to another discussion on this? Do we wanna get more feedback from the Bike and Run? I mean, I'm good with it, so I think we should try it, and...
I'm comfortable with it, too.
You know, I'm not. Okay, I just heard Trustee Hopkins what he said, and believe me, I'm not that familiar with the things that you've done there, and the workings of it, but just from the superficial things that I've heard, you're meeting four times a year, if there's five people, why would we even consider dissolving it? They're moving forward in a positive direction.
I don't think we're dissolving it, I think we're just merging.
I think you should call them and talk to them, because if they're of interest in doing more.
Members of their...
Yeah.
Until I get more information on this, and have a chance to talk with staff and some other people, right now, where I'm sitting.
We'll send this back to staff, and let's get some feedback from the current Bike and Run Committee members. Who chairs that?
I think sending just an email is fine, that you sent it, but I think we need to have some discussion.
What's that?
What was the...
No, I said...
I'm losing my job.
It's an unpaid job, Adam.
I know.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you, if you guys don't agree with me, I'm gonna get my bike and go home.
The deadline for input was October 1st, so...
There's still time.
There's still some time, and we'll follow up.
This was to bring it to the board for discussion, which we had, and let's get that feedback from all the members of the current boards, Bike and Run and EDC, and see what their thought process is. They're obviously giving up their time.
I think personal reach-out is the way to go. I think we sent, there's an email that has been sent, but I think personal reach-out for people that have put time in would be a better way to go right now, instead of just waiting for them, like, let them know, hey, you are valuable.
I'm good with that.
All right.
So, you don't, you have your orders, you're bringing this back to staff, you're gonna do the follow-up with the current members, and present it to us in a memo, or in... Okay.
And I think you should also point out to them that there is an attendance requirement now.
Yes, an attendance requirement, correct. All right.
All right, that's all on Community and Economic Development.
Chairman Gansey, Police and Health Committee, Chairman Swansky.
Thank you, President Gunstein. The Police Department is requesting amendments to several village ordinances pertaining to commercial truck enforcement and permitting procedures to address complaints from residents regarding violations of weight-restricted roadways by commercial trucks. Despite the numerous amounts of signage before and on restricted roadways and increased enforcement, commercial trucks continue to violate local weight restrictions. These suggested amendments are a good balance for the residents and our local business community. I'd like to pass this off to Police Department.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. It's my first time up here, so, so, my name's Officer Abulhadi, I'm with the Bartlett Police Department's Traffic Unit. I've served in that position for approximately one year, before that, I did about two years on patrol, so I'm relatively new to the unit. So I'm relatively new to the unit. A big thing that's been going on since I've been in the unit, and I'm sure you guys have all heard about during your ten years as trustees, president, clerk, et cetera, and as residents, we've heard a lot about commercial vehicle traffic, how they're continuing to violate local weight restrictions, how they're depositing on our roadways, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, just a couple of things you guys need to know about commercial vehicle enforcement nationwide. Approximately 5% of all police officers receive any type of commercial vehicle training. The Bartlett Police Department's significantly better. We're at about 20%. So, we're doing a lot better there. And per the U.S. Government Accountability Office, 180,000-pound commercial vehicle does the same impact as 9,600 automobiles. That study was done back in 1971, I believe. Interstate highways are obviously built to a significantly different standard than our roadways here in the village. To get our roadways up to standard, it would cost in excess of 19.21 or 22 million dollars per mile. So, a few things, there's a lot of violations that we regularly see with trucks on our roadways. Many of the trucks we see on our roadways either lack sufficient licensing, sufficient registration, sufficient equipment, proper labeling, bills of lading, and especially weights, or they're violating local weight restrictions. So, a few things to go over on the truck, on what is on a truck. So you're going to have the business name up top, so the operator, what town, what city they're out of, the USDOT number, and the motor carrier number, if they have any commodities that are regulated. People that need commercial driver's licenses are people that are operating vehicles with actual weights or rated weights above 26,000 pounds for Class Bs, or above 26,000 pounds and towing over 10,000 pounds for Class A commercial driver's licenses. There's a few types of registration plates that we regularly see. I'm sorry, this is, there's a lot to go over in trucks. It's normally an 80-hour class. I'm trying to break it down into about a 10-minute speech, five, 10 minutes for everybody. So, there's eight, so Z-plates are 80,000-pound plates. Those are the ones you normally see on 53-foot tractor trailers. Next is going to be the apportion plates. The only difference between those and the Z-plates are they're allowed to operate interstate. And the next one would be the trailer plates, so they work just like truck plates where they have B numbering, C numbering, B lettering, C lettering, et cetera. They're for trailers, they have different weight amounts, and the last one is semi-trailer plates. Those have no allotted weights on them. One of the issues we regularly see with these types of operators is car haulers, particularly on and around Lake Street, cutting through North Bartlett, or not North Bartlett Road, between West Bartlett Railroad through North Avenue out back onto Lake Street. These trucks will regularly run B-plates, which are 8,000 pounds with semi-trailer plates. So they're only allotted 8,000 pounds of load and they're regularly carrying in excess of 30,000 pounds, sometimes more than that. So, there's a few types of ways trucks can be overweight. They're going to, they can have axle weights that are access, so steering axles are about 12,000 pounds. Single axles that are non-steering are allotted 20,000 pounds. And tandems, which are wheels that are together, or axles that are together, that are between 42 and 96 inches, they're allowed 34,000 pounds, or they don't have sufficient registration like we previously covered. There's more on that in Sections 3401D of the ILCS and 15111. So the big issue, obviously, in our town is the violation of local weight restrictions. We have a few issues going on with our signs. We do need to adjust our signs to get them all updated, because they weren't obviously all put up at the same time because the village has grown. This is one that's on Schick and, Schick and Mayflower, it just says over 12,000 pounds for our drivers. It's not exactly easy for them to discern what that means. It could be 12,000 pounds of actual weight, 12,000 pounds of rated weight, 12,000 pounds of registered weight. Our ordinance is currently for 15316, include registered weight and actual weight, but not rated weight. And then another thing is safety stickers. Safety stickers come in two forms. One is for interstate and one is interstate. So the top sticker is going to be an Illinois safety sticker for interstate. And then the second one is only allotted for vehicles that have USDOT numbers that are operating interstate. One issue that we regularly come in conflict with is operators that don't have DOT numbers. They only have state plates, state registration, and they're running, and they're buying these on Amazon for their safety inspections. They can buy 30 packs of them for $15 on Amazon. So obviously, with the low number of truck officers that we have nationwide, as well as only 20% of our police department trained in this, this type of forgery regularly gets thrown to the wayside because officers just don't know what to look for. And here's a couple of things that I've seen just in the last year on our roadways. So, this is a temporary registration permit that was stuck to the front of a tractor. I ran the plate because he violated our local weight restriction on West Bartlett Road, and it came back to nothing. I ran the VIN. The last time this vehicle had been registered was 2015 out of Nebraska. Yeah, so it turns out that this operator that I stopped and subsequently arrested had no commercial driver's license. He forged his own registration plate, forged his own insurance, gave me a fake operating company that was not registered in here, nor Indiana, where he claimed to be registered out of. And he had no safety inspection, so it was unsafe to be on the roadway. There was numerous...
Was he delivering to Bartlett?
No, he was driving through to a salvage truck yard. And then here's another one.
Those vehicles being pounded at that point?
Um, no ma'am, they are not, they're not eligible for seizure under Article 36.
I mean, they don't have, nothing is...
They can be impounded.
Nothing's legal on them, nothing at all.
So essentially, the only thing is going to happen, he can be towed for five, so he'll get it back with $500 after paying the $500 impound fee to us, plus the tow cost, but there's no seizure or forfeiture.
But are they legally allowed to like remove it from that yard without a tow truck? They can drive it out?
They can remove it from the yard, but they're not allowed to drive it onto the roadway legally.
If somebody else would pull over the same thing.
Same thing, it would happen again. But once again, only 5% of officers nationwide are trained in commercial vehicle enforcement. And that gentleman told me during our interview that he'd made numerous of these and hadn't been stopped. I think he only had one stop in the last three years that he'd been operating like that, and he'd been arrested in another state.
What kind of fines does he face from this incident?
So, that incident, he went to, he was charged with multiple felonies, multiple misdemeanors, and he spent one day, time considered served for the Cook County Jail, time not actually served.
What was his fines?
Or costs.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
You kidding me? Who's the state's attorney over there? What's going on?
There had been Kim Fox as a time, right?
That's absurd.
So here's another example of something I've seen on the roadway in the last year. I was doing routine patrol on Lake Street, and I saw this attached to the back of the truck. I stopped it.
Just write this out.
Because it's obviously fraudulent to some nature. I ran the VIN. It did come, that, those registration numbers came back to the VIN assigned per the Secretary of State. I stopped the gentleman, he told me, you can't stop me for this. This is, I do this all the time. I used to have a CDL in Washington. I was doing routine patrol on West Bartlett Road, my first week in the traffic unit, and I observed a circle going around and around near a tire. I stopped the driver, and there was a very large bubble in the sidewall. Obviously, an enormous safety risk, and to nobody's surprise, this vehicle did not have a safety sticker. The driver also did not have the proper licensing to drive the vehicle. So his vehicle, he was arrested and the vehicle was towed. And nationwide, you don't have to stay in Bartlett to see this. I'm sure a lot of people saw this on the news, that there was a CDL operator in Florida who made an improper turn on the turnpike, where he was unauthorized to do so. And a vehicle that was heading in the direction that he had previously been heading on before he made a turn did not have time to slow down to avoid the collision, and it killed the driver and two passengers in the vehicle. This driver was charged in Florida during his questions with the federal, USDOT Federal Motor Safety Commission. He could only, I'm sorry, it's not funny, but he only answered two correct verbal questions and could only identify 25% of roadway signs. So a few things that we are looking to do to implement to improve commercial vehicle safety. So the first thing is updating Ordinance 615316 for local weight restrictions. For a very long time, this ordinance has not had any penalty section attached to it. So while it was against Village Ordinance 2, drive your rated vehicles in excess through the Village of Bartlett, there was no penalties that the officers could assign to it. Next is updating Parts 15100 to current weight penalties. Updating Parts 15100 to include commercial vehicle violations with separate compliance citation fine schedule. Then updating Ordinance 615301 to include oversized vehicle permits and repossessor-own local weight restriction permits. Currently, OX Kart is the premier system in the ordinance, in commercial vehicle permit systems. So Carroll Street, Hoffman Estates, Roselle, Addison, Glen Ellen, DuPage, Department of Transportation, and several other agencies around us have used it for over a decade. And I'm proposing that it's time that the Village of Bartlett considers using a system similar to this or this system to administer overweight permits. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
And you may have said this before during your presentation, and I didn't understand it if you did. But how can you tell if a truck is overweight?
So there's several different types of overweight. I think that would be the easiest way to go about it. So there's overweight by length and dimensions. So each truck has what's called an bridging formula. So based on its, so it's based on its length and its axles, it's allotted a certain amount of weight. So, a 20-foot, three-axle truck is allotted 51,000 pounds. Well, and then there's certain exceptions to that, but the way you can tell if a truck is overweight normally, with 111 violations in particular, there's going to be wheel bulging, there's going to be, the suspension will sit lower because it's carrying more weight than it was designed to do so. Vehicles that are, whether they're automatic or manual, they will usually have to shuffle through their gears a lot faster when they're going uphill or from a stop position to get to, to get to the desired speed of traffic.
Doesn't that, isn't it become more of an opinion that one would have?
Um, yeah, so there's a different, to stop an overweight vehicle, you don't need probable cause or reasonable suspicion. It's described as reasonable, or reasonable belief. So based on our training and experience, what we believe an overweight vehicle to look like. And then we can verify it and take it to the scales as part of the federal motor carriers.
You know, my, one relative asked, you know, and I said, the police officers, they have a scale. And they put all these trucks on a scale. Oh, really, grandpa? I said, trust me, I know that. I'm a trustee, trust me, so.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for explaining that. Part of that was humorous. I expect to get a better reaction from the audience, I guess.
Sorry, I'm still a little nervous. It's my first time here. But yeah, the second type is, sometimes it's as prima facie evidence of what it looks like. So B-truck plates have 8,000 pound, are allotted 8,000 pounds on the roadway, the same as just a regular passenger car. And if they're, I'm sorry?
That's amazing.
And then, so when we, sometimes you just look, one car weighs between 6,000 and 8,000 pounds with the trailer, it's going to be right there. So if they only have 8,000 pounds of registered weight on its face, it's going to be heavy because there's a truck, a vehicle on the trailer, and then the trailer itself.
So, what's the ask, then, is to get that...
So, updating several ordinances.
Okay.
So it's going to be updating 612, so all of our C-tickets.
Okay.
That section, 615 Part 100, 615 Part 300, so 301, and 615, 316. There's going to be a lot of violations. The packets I passed out prior to the board meeting, everything in, everything in black is the same. With our current ordinances and everything in red, will be a lot of the modifications that we're currently looking at. Obviously, this is a living document, and Mr. Asbrooth and myself have gone over this ad nauseam, and we expect many more meetings before this is hammered out in its entirety.
Okay.
One of the other big changes here is that we would bring some of these violations, including the overweight violations, into our administrative adjudication hearing now. There was a court ruling about two years ago that allowed home municipalities to adjudicate those types of vehicle code offenses through administrative adjudication. So we would get the fines instead of it going to circuit court.
And if they, if they get arrested and they have to go to Cook County, can we still give them a local adjudication?
Yes.
On top of that?
Yes.
So I see an increase in penalty from 25 to 75 if it's paid within 10 days? That doesn't seem like it has a lot of teeth in it to me.
So, that, the 25 to 75 is just our compliance tickets for regular things like expired registration plates, expired lights. So the daily things for passenger vehicles, those things, we haven't updated them in about 40 years. The last time we updated that fine schedule from $25, so the Consumer Price Index shows that $25 in 1984 would be $78 and some change today. So I rounded down to 75 to be fair to our residents. But with that being, that being said, those citations normally, if they were go to the state court, would be between $90 and $164 for moving violations. But $90 would be for like a registration ticket. So, going any higher than that would be excessively punitive, in my opinion.
So...
I also had a...
Go ahead.
Thank you. Are these violations reported to the DOT?
So all the commercial violations due to federal masking laws are required to be reported to the Department of Transportation, whether they're handled administratively within our, within our system or in a court system. They would have to be reported.
So, within a certain period of time, once these are reported, if you went to the safer website, you should be able to see these out-of-service violations that are there?
That is correct. Unfortunately, due to lack of enforcement officers available, whether it's the Department of Transportation, Illinois State, or Illinois State Troopers, which are the only ones that can issue out-of-service violations, they're very few and far between, and they can't catch everything that's going through because there's more commercial vehicles being registered, and more companies being registered every day than there are troopers or DOT inspectors to administer said inspections.
So are you certified to do that?
I am certified to do inspections, but I cannot do out-of-services. That is a right that is reserved for the Illinois State Police. So if I see something that warrants an out-of-service, I can call a state trooper that's working our district, and he can issue the out-of-service after doing his inspection, which would be way quicker based off me already conducting an unofficial inspection, if you will.
So can any police, can, can police officers apply to get this designation, or is it just the ISP?
ISP is the only one who is authorized in the state of Illinois to do out-of-service violations or out-of-services for drivers or vehicles.
We do host overweight campaigns with Illinois State Police and other municipalities adjacent. I've seen it on Lake Street where Bartlett and Streamwood or Hannibal Park and the Illinois State Police are doing it in conjunction to, to take them out of service, if I'm...
Normally, that's, it's a lot faster because we'll have all of our truck officers on scene that day. And some days we'll do it in, with South Elgin officers on the Kane County side of town. And we'll be able to get different routes. And those things really help the state troopers because they need, they have an expectation of inspections they have to do quarter, I don't know how their system's set up. But by us doing preliminary inspections, if you will, they can sooner observe those violations and document them to get these unsafe drivers' vehicles off the roadway.
What percentage of ticketing results in two or more tickets?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I'm understanding...
When you pull somebody over, what percentage of the pull-over stops result in more than one violation?
Based on my training and experience with commercial vehicles, I would say over 90% of my stops, I would say I don't have hard data to back that up, would be eligible for more than one citation.
Okay, so the fine can be compiled, $175, $100, $400, whatever their violations are. So, in addition to what 75 not having teeth in it, there's a high likelihood that they're going to have more violations than just that?
The violation of local weight restriction, that's probably the gem within this ask, if you will. That, that violation is going, it'll be a required hearing date in front of our hearing officer, and it'll be, if found guilty, it'll be $250, all the way up to $750 as determined by the... to $750, as determined by the adjudicator.
Do they have to come back for that?
They will have, it is a mandatory appearance here for a hearing.
What if they don't?
Then the hearing officer will assess, based on...
It can be found in default, assess the fines against them, potato show up.
Is there an ask for this OXcart software?
No, OXcart is free of charge, they're gonna be paid by the truck companies for the permitting, that it's going to be run by the traffic.
The permitting fees would range between $5 and $16 depending on the weight of the, of what type of permit they're asking for.
And just for context, we are probably one of maybe three other municipalities that do not use OXcart, so very few, I mean, there is, the vast majority of municipalities are using OXcart, so the trucking companies are very familiar with it. They're the ones, you know, we have the ability to set the routes of where these trucks can occupy, so they're very familiar with how OXcart works.
And that replaces manual, paper form process?
It's just something we currently don't have.
Yeah, we, Dr. We do not have a current permitting, so people are just, I've been called numerous times as the traffic officer from companies that are doing work in this area that will have to drive on Bartlett roadways, and they're requesting permits, and I tell them that I don't have a permit to give you, so you cannot be in violation of our local weight restrictions, or 15111, or 15401...
So call and say, what's the route, and it's, well, we don't have a permitting system that justifies that.
Free software. See a problem with that? Okay. Thank you.
Does this give you more authority to protect our residents and our streets?
Correct.
Okay, so I think it's kind of a no-brainer to, to move forward with this. As somebody who had a friend get killed by an overweight truck the first day Bartlett Hills, or Bartlett High School opened, I think it's important that we put some meat in this and, and get these, you know, trucks in, in compliance as much as we can, so...
So do we need to have any more discussion, or we send this back to the board?
I think we take it...
What motivates these people? Is it money-driven?
They're all for-profit companies.
Yeah, okay, and, we're on the same page.
So if no one has any other questions, we'll send this to the board?
Sure.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, that's set. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Move by Trustee Danny?
Second.
Second, by Trustee Hopkins, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Why, that was really interesting.